She was going to join remote.
Oh, okay.
Yep, she is. There she is.
Okay.
At 6:32 PM on June 15th. Since we have one member attending remotely, so I'm just going to ask, Jennifer, can you let us know whether you can hear us so that we can know that we can hear you as well?
I can hear you just fine.
Good. And can you all hear Jennifer?
Okay.
Excellent. First up is our approval of minutes from May 9th. And those, you do have to be logged in in order to be able to see them. And... Where did they go? Oh my gosh. I can't. Board Docs isn't looking for me. Hang on. I apologize. My Board Docs just hiccuped. I can't see anything. Let's try that again. Okay, there. Did anybody have any edits, comments to the... I see Ben's hand and Jennifer's hand is up, so I'll start with Jennifer. Go ahead.
Oh, thanks. So, the minutes, I don't know, they're going to say things like so-and-so commented or so-and-so responded, but not what the comment or the response was. And I guess I'm just more accustomed to minutes that are a little bit more detailed in terms of what was said. So that's just a comment I wanted to make. I wonder if they can be fleshed out a little more before we vote on them.
We can ask that. Doug, do you know, I don't know who's doing our minutes anymore.
Well, and I don't know who did those in particular, so I'll have to ask and see. And it'll probably depend upon, at this point, if it wasn't in the notes that they took, it'll have to be if we have a decent recording of the evening. But certainly, we can ask. I can check on that.
Okay. Ben?
Yeah, and under new and continuing business, just for the record, I'm Harrington with an E. And then also, I probably said groundbreaking. I definitely didn't say supper awesome. I probably said super awesome. And that's all I had.
Okay. Any other? Peter?
Yeah, I'm going to abstain from the minutes because I don't log into Board Docs as a matter, of course, so that I can see what it looks like publicly. And talked about the need for having the draft minutes publicly posted. And so I don't want to hold up the vote if other people want to vote. So, but just maybe in the future, if we could have it posted, that would be helpful.
So I'm hearing two folks don't want to move on this, so unless somebody else feels strongly, I think we'll table this and come back to it, hopefully with more fleshed out notes. Great. So now we'll move on to public comment. And before we open the floor to members to come up, we do have some email and some voicemail as well, but we always start with in-person comments. And just as a reminder, what we, per policy, we will be displaying the written public comment that we received. There, it is available on Board Docs for public, so you don't have to be logged in as a school committee member to be able to read it. We ask that folks identify, state your name and your place of residence or connection with the Amherst Elementary Schools. I will also comment because we've heard a couple of things, including an open meeting law complaint regarding our public comment. That public comment is that. It's opportunity for the community and the public to speak in public. It is constitutionally protected speech. The school committee, and this has been litigated in the State Supreme Court and others repeatedly, while we can specify the time, location, and length and other logistical matters of when we hear public comment, we do not have control over what people say because it is protected speech. We do have a policy that asks that people not speak directly to matters that aren't under the purview of the school committee. So, things that have to do with the Town Council of Amherst or the town meeting in Pelham are not necessarily topics that the school committee has purview over. That also includes staff or personnel decisions and the like because the school committee, we hire and evaluate the superintendent only. So I just want to state that because I think that there's some confusion. And so we, if people, if public comment, if we disagree with it, if the public disagrees with what another member of the public is saying in public comment, that is not a violation of policy or open meeting law. So with that, I invite any of the members of the public that are here to come forward if you would like to speak.
Good evening. I'm Ruthie Killohill, and I am and work at Fort River and APA member. And I'm speaking on behalf of the APA Representative Council. The district continues to engage unethical hiring practices that have left schools destabilized and which negatively impacts our students, staff, and schools. This concern was stated in the APA's vote of no confidence in the district's leadership and in a previous letter shared with the school committee, asking for an audit of the district's hiring practices. Prior to going on leave, Superintendent Morris once again made appointments of staff to administer positions in closed-door meetings without a fair process. Morris did not post these positions, nor opened an internal process for an interim principal nor conducted interviews. These changes were made without the courtesy of having a dialogue with the staff before or after the appointments. Superintendent Morris decided on grades seven to 12 leadership structure with Talib Siddique serving as the seven-to-12 principal for both buildings. Morris claims that, quote, "This year, the shared leadership will have profound long-term benefits for the students because it will provide an opportunity to begin the collaborative work of creating a fully aligned seven-to-12 educational continuum that draws on the unique strengths of both ARMS and ARHS." The APA wonders how this can possibly happen. The process by which he came to this decision was not transparent, collaborative, nor did involve the input or feedback from staff, students, families, or the community. Dr. Morris appointed two assistant principals over the middle school. One assistant principal was promoted internally from within the middle school without a hiring process. The other assistant principal was moved from Fort River to the middle school, disrupting the stability of his elementary school. The district removed the only bilingual and Latino administrator from Fort River, which houses the Comanantes dual-language program, and replaced him with a non-Spanish-speaking white administrator. Assistant Principal Julio Fernandez has formed supportive relationships with families, students, staff, made choices in the best interest of the students and school, and has guided the school's practices and procedures to align with the cultural diversity within our communities, which is vital to the Comanantes program. Mr. Fernandez's staff, students, and families have stated they want him to stay at Fort River. The APA demands the ARPS superintendent and school committee keep Assistant Principal Mr. Fernandez at Fort River, conduct a fair internal hiring process to determine the leadership of the middle school, and three, engage in dialogue with ARMS staff and include their input to design a sustainable leadership model at ARMS. This is on behalf of the APA Representative Council. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Maria Luisa Distefano. I'm a parent, I'm resident in Amherst and a parent of a student at Fort River Elementary. I'm here to... We have, as long as, as part of the group of parents, there are 60 parents, 60 parents and caregivers that have signed a letter that we sent to the school committee and the acting superintendent and all the leadership of our ARPS. Because the letter is very long, I'm going to just focus on some key points. We wanted to express our deep concern and frustration regarding the announcement that Mr. Julio Fernandez will leave his position as Assistant Principal for River Elementary. We have, we articulate in this letter several concerns. One concern is about the process through which Mr. Fernandez has been appointed to the interim position, leadership position at ARMS. As mentioned in the communication and also like in other testimonies, it was, the families were not consulted, but the families are asked to provide support during the process of the, to volunteer during the process of the hiring process. And removing Mr. Fernandez from the position to, he attained and was chosen for by our community means dismantling the demographic process, silencing the voice of the main stakeholders, and not valuing the time and effort we put into serving our community. In addition, we believe imposing a second interim position in such a short period of Mr. Julio Fernandez, a member of a BIPOC community, reiterates the unbalanced service that educators from historically marginalized communities are used to carrying in comparison to other educators from white and English-dominated backgrounds. We also have concern about the need for continuity and representation of historically marginalized communities. They are integral to the Comanantes program as well as to the building blocks and aims programs of Fort River Elementary. We have concern about the lack of support of the Latinx Spanish teachers of Fort River, especially because, because after the announcement, it has been announced that an interim position for Ms. Katie Richardson will start in August, but that is not, it doesn't fulfill all the duties that Ms. Katie Richardson was already fulfilling in her position, and we are concerned about that. We wanted to make sure that you all know that Fort River Elementary indeed needs both a full-time position dedicated to the Comanantes programs and a strong leadership team, not a teacher leader position in lieu of dedicated leadership. Also, we are concerned that the Spanish side teachers do not have adequate support in the classroom, and this is detrimental to the students' development and doesn't serve the professional development of educators. For the last 10 years, the district has invested in training and staffing to support co-teaching across the elementary schools. As we know, whole group instruction is not the best, in lieu of group, this whole group instruction. And in order to truly meet the social justice mission that the school committee intended when developing the Comanantes programs, there needs to be more investment in training and adequate staffing to provide more small group instruction opportunities in the Comanantes programs. Thank you for your attention and for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Does anybody else like to speak? No? Then we'll go to voicemail.
My name is Susan Wells. I am a town resident, a parent, and the librarian at Wildwood Elementary. I'm calling tonight to implore you to revisit the resolution you passed on March 14th to restore the library paraeducators for the fiscal year 2024. Despite the resolution that you passed, the library paraeducator positions have not been restored to the budget. Beginning on May 29th, Lanny Blackman, the Fort River librarian, and I have reached out four times to the acting superintendent to advocate for the position. We have requested to meet with the acting superintendent, and we have not received any response to our multiple requests. I feel like this issue has gotten lost in the shuffle, and I am compelled to advocate for the library program and my students. So I am back before you, the school committee, to ask you again to restore funding to support and serve our students. Without a library paraeducator at Wildwood next year, project-based learning will suffer greatly. The Wildwood Library Makerspace will be closed, and our brand-new collaborations with UMass Athletics and Amherst College will not happen in the upcoming school year. Please help. Thank you for your consideration.
Hi, my name is Dan Gage, and I am the library para at Fort River School. I've worked for the district for eight years, seven as a para in the library. We serve over 300 students every week. That number will be closer to 350 when the new school year begins. My main responsibility is circulation of library books, followed by shelving of the books upon their return. I also help students and teachers find books, recommend books, and share books that I have read with us. In the past year, in the Fort River Library, there were 32,965 books circulated. In addition to the circulation of books, I also exist in catalog and preparation of hundreds of books that are purchased for the library. In addition, Fort River is also losing the librarian at the end of the school year. Even if they were staying, there is literally no way that they could do library lessons, circulate and resell books, catalog and prepare new books. The librarian will also have little or no time to collaborate with teachers, another important function of the librarian. I am a resident of Amherst and a taxpayer, and I wonder why there's no funding for such an important position. It seems to me a bit ludicrous to be spending money on a new library in town, yet leave out the funding needed to foster a love for reading to our students. Thank you, Dan Gage.
Hello. It is 12:46 PM on June 15th. My name is Laura Hunter. I am calling about the budget. I'm a parent of two children, both of whom were lucky to attend Wildwood kindergarten through sixth grade. My children were exposed to the richest, most involved library experience that I could have ever asked for. Susan Wells does monumental work as the librarian, but in order for the library to offer all of the resources, she must have a paraeducator working with her. The Wildwood Library currently offers project-based learning, a Makerspace, and has a collaboration with UMass Athletics and Amherst College. In order for those to all continue, the paraeducators must be fully funded. I know there is money in the budget for this. The resolution that you, the school committee, passed on March 14th must be followed. You must restore all the library paraeducators for the 2024 budget. I ask that you reprioritize the students and the educators in this district. The focus has been pulled away during the recent debacle and failure of leadership. We must center the students in all conversations. We must center the educational experience, and to do that, we must reinstate all paraeducator positions. Thank you.
Those are the voicemails, so now we can share the email. Two of those voicemails are also written comments, so probably couldn't scroll more quickly over those to allow time for the others.
I don't want to go too fast. I don't know if this is one of those that was...
I don't, no, I don't think so.
Okay, so I'll back up and go a little slower on this one. Allow a little more time for reading.
So this one was red.
That one was?
Yep, from Dan Gage. This one, this last, sorry, the next one.
That one? Or the next one?
The next one was red also, which is, I think, the last one.
Okay, that's the end of the...
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, if there is no more public comment from the room, then we will move on. We will move, next up is the superintendent's update. So with that, look to you, Doug.
So not a tremendous amount to report here. I've had the pleasure of going to some of the end-of-year activities that are happening in the schools, in particular today, I was at Crocker Farm with Principal Shea, and they're moving on ceremony for their sixth graders, although a different district. I was in Pelham yesterday. I couldn't make it to Fort River or Wildwood because they were simultaneous with those other two events. But it's really, you know, a great opportunity to celebrate the kids as they're transitioning to a new building, and also just to celebrate their time at the elementary schools that they've, many of them spent seven years at, some maybe even eight. And so it's a great joy to see the kids and acknowledge their learning and their growth. And, you know, in some ways to recognize the teachers for the hard work that they do and the pairs that support them as well, and then to also appreciate the families that support the schools and also support their children. So it's, you know, really, of all the things I've gotten to do in the last few weeks in this role, it's one of the more pleasurable ones, so that's been, that's been a lot of fun. You know, other things, I think that there are, you know, a number of topics that we're working on in the district in trying to prepare ourselves to sort of finish the year and get ready for next year in some respects. Our summer programs will be starting in July, and so we're, you know, we were talking about the transportation questions and food service for those programs, and that's our thing in the last week. We're also, other planning and preparation work that we're doing as we cut out of this year and go into next, so we're in process and beginning the process of that planning procedures and processes and having that dialogue with administrators about preparing for the coming school year. Excuse me. What was the other thing I was going to mention? And for those that don't know, tomorrow's the last day of school, and it's a half-day, so it's a shorter day. But nonetheless, you know, as much as we're grateful for the end of the year and the opportunity to rest and recoup and plan for next year, I think it's also a time of reflection and, you know, a lot of gratitude and, you know, and pride for the accomplishment of the students this year and all the hard work that our staff have put together. So I wanted to take a minute and acknowledge all that work and effort by kids and adults alike that make things go here, and really have people take a moment to appreciate the quality of the people we have and the quality of the students we have and the efforts that those kids make and the learning that happens for them. And it's really a great honor to serve in this role, to help keep that going and promote that as much as I can. And I think that's it for my report. Thank you. And I'll take any questions if anybody has any.
And I hear a raised, I hear a raised hand from Jennifer. Jennifer?
Thanks. So Doug, what is the status of the paraeducator positions? Specifically, I'm talking about the motion that we made back in March when we passed the budget, when we approved the motion to reduce, to change reductions in paras from 10 to 7, and then we strongly urged the superintendent and the finance director to keep the three full-time library para positions. What's the status of that?
So there's a couple of pieces to the puzzle. So we have a tentative agreement with the APA relative to the contract, which influences both fiscal '23 and fiscal '24 and fiscal '25. Those are the three years contained within the contract. We have a, like I said, we have a temporary agreement with him. The union's going to have to... The union's going to have to take it to a full vote. And then, of course, the regional school committee will take it up at their meeting next Tuesday evening for ratification as well. So both those have to formally say yes to that. But nonetheless, that was one piece of the puzzle that plays into, you know, our ability to restore any positions or take any other action as recommended by the school committee. I think the second piece is that on Monday night, the Amherst Town Council took its vote on the budget for the coming year. They held steady at the three percent. It had been two and a half when they first spoke to us in November. Then in, I want to say, March, they had increased to three percent increase. You, as a school committee, had asked for an additional, I want to say eighty-four thousand dollars of reserves of additional funding, which they did not grant. So the three percent is the total increase. And to be perfectly honest, I'm working on evaluating how the, both the contract tentative agreement and the budget that was passed on Monday mesh together and see what opportunity or not that we have. And so I'm hesitant to make any further or more detailed comment until I get a chance to do that a little more fully. Nonetheless, you know, at the time that the town went from two and a half to three percent, the superintendent, Mike Morris, and myself had suggested to you to put that into the control accounts as a placeholder in there for potential negotiation coverage. We weren't thinking that at that point we could commit to restoring any positions in a firm way because we still had negotiations that were ongoing. Now that those have hopefully resolved fully, we can kind of do the math on that. And, but I haven't had a full analysis of that yet. And so I think what I may suggest is that I ask myself, in my other role, to write a memo to you guys. Once I get a chance to do that, which will be in the next few days, I'll write a memo to the school committee just because we won't necessarily meet again until August. So a memo relative to how that's playing out and what the potential options are relative to the funding that we did get and the impact of the bargaining that was hopefully finished.
So staying on that, because I think it was, it was actually poorly reported in the Gazette, I think, in the article that was in the Gazette today. It sort of left open this notion that there was only two classroom teachers and only seven para educators, which was the number after, after the vote. So the budget that the school committee approved is not the budget that we have.
Correct.
And when this happened a year ago, our plan B was to stick with the budget but to leverage and pull in ESER funding where needed in order to still keep the budget that the school committee had approved. We are already using up all of the remaining ESER funds in this budget. So my question, and we do tentatively have a meeting on the calendar for the twenty-seventh. So it's, and maybe we can come back to it at future agenda planning. But it was a question of, should the school committee revisit that bottom line number? Given that what, the number that the town council approved is the number that was in the budget book, which is different than what we approved. And that included ten para, eliminated seventeen point four positions, including four classroom teachers and ten para educators. So I think, given the multiple things that you've just discussed, I do wonder if we, as a committee, want to revisit that, knowing that the town council is not giving us the money that we asked for. And it is my recollection also that where we landed on the tentative contract, which I believe this regional school committee can't vote on it until after A P E A has approved it. But.
I can confirm that. I'm not sure. I mean, typically, that is what we do. I don't know if it's required.
It's not legal.
Okay.
As far as.
Okay. But the, but the bottom line cost for fiscal twenty-four is greater than what we had in the budget, is my recollection.
That's correct.
So there's a couple significant moving pieces that I do think that it might make sense for us to come back to that on the twenty-seventh. Peter?
I think you make a great observation for future agenda planning.
Yes.
So I will resist the three or four comments I would like to make on that topic now. Superintendent update.
Any other questions for Doug on his update? Ben? Oh, Peter, sorry.
Yeah, so for the summer, two things I wanted to ask you about what our plans are for. One is the free meals availability. In past years, it's been a little different through COVID and through temporary funding. We've had some UMass. So if you could just talk about that and what the availability is. And also, if you could just highlight any major facilities projects that might be happening. Maybe that's more of a question from Mr. Darrington, but I know that the summer is an opportunity to do a lot of that because the kids obviously aren't in the buildings.
Right. Well, there are actually kids in a lot of the buildings. It's the summer program we do, and it does, it does limit us on what we can do as far as summer projects and programs, and that's a concern. You know, speaking with Mr. Roy Clark today, a little bit about those projects and what he thinks he can accomplish or not accomplish. We talked a little more about other districts and not Amherst as much. But nonetheless, you know, it'll be a busy summer. There are some projects, particularly at Fort River, that we'd like to take some action on as far as some classroom spaces, given the demand in that, the physical demands in that building for the number of students that we have and try to create spaces that are improved a bit if we sort of put more kids into those spaces. So I think that's definitely projects that are going to move ahead this summer in that regard. You know, most of the rest of them are much more mundane. So, but we'll definitely move ahead on as many as we can and as quickly as we can in the spaces and times that we have. On the food service, it really is going to return back to the program model that was in place pre-pandemic. So the summer food service program that allows for some sites that offer meals to kids in the community. And then we'll have them at our physical sites as well. At the elementary level, the places where programs will be, we'll have those free meals as part of that. And so it really is kind of parallel to what it was in summer of nineteen. And I'm not sure, you know, that was a program we did, and there was some partnership with the university on that. I don't know off the top of my head, and I haven't asked our food service director about whether UMass is going to participate again this summer the way they have in the past. So I can definitely get the answers to that and get back to you on it. But it largely will parallel what we've done in the past. And I believe that the programs that we're offering in the elementary level will have meals available. Thank you.
Jennifer?
Thanks. I have two follow-up questions for the things that Doug said. So first, Doug, you said you mentioned writing a memo to the school committee with options regarding financial matters for next year. And so I assume options means options that we would discuss and vote on? So, and I think that's where Allison was saying we could have another meeting on June twenty-seventh. So is that what you meant by options? And also, what is our obligation to the current library paras? I assume we're contractually obligated to notify them, like, a certain number of days or by a certain date as to whether they have jobs next for the fall. I just, I'm concerned about the current paras that we have and the uncertainty of not knowing if they have jobs. So those are my two questions.
Right, so I think if the committee decides to meet on the twenty-seventh, then we'll take up the budget at that point and probably require you to vote a different budget, which if you wanted to change where funding is line item-wise. And to some extent, if the contract's fully resolved and signed, you know, money that we have in control accounts can be distributed to payroll accounts, so we can even take that action as part and parcel of that. But in that, in that action, we can also discuss what the possibilities and implications and requirements are relative to what that means. So I think that, you know, I was suggesting a memo just to inform you, but if you're going to actually meet, then it's more, we can more formally take action in that regard regarding the budget and getting, you know, essentially the bottom line of the budget you passed, matching with what appropriation you actually have available. Now I've lost the second question. What was it?
Notification.
Yes, so the short story is that no one is losing a position. There are sufficient, you know, retirements, resignations, exits of various kinds, so that no one's losing a position. It's a reassignment circumstance for these people. So as far as individuals losing, you know, a job, that is not going to happen because we have enough openings that occur that no one will lose any position. And so if there was a, if there was a need to notify someone of their lost position, I believe for the para professional contract, it's June first. But certainly, you know, this conversation has been happening in the public realm since March when you voted your budget, so that it's been known, it's not, it's, and those staff have been aware that those para professional positions were slated in the budget as originally sort of in front of you to be changed. And so that's, whether they've been reassigned, I don't know right off the top of my head. Whether those reassignments have been made, I think maybe some have and some haven't. I think there's, you know, a different process in different buildings, depending on the principal and how they're thinking about their staffing and where those folks will go and what they will do. But nonetheless, so I think as far as explicit requirements of the contract, I think we've met those. And I think, again, the key point is none of these folks will lose a position, like, out on the street. That's not the situation we're talking about here. It's really more a reassignment to a different role and responsibility within the district in a para professional role.
So said another way, the role is being eliminated, the roles are being eliminated, and the people filling those roles are being reassigned to roles that are not being eliminated.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions for? Seeing none. Next up is chairs update, and I don't have one because I was going to update about the town council budget vote, so thank you, Doug.
Stole your thunder.
School committee updates is next up. Does any member have an update or announcement? Seeing none, then we can move on to new and continuing business. And first up, we have the Crocker Farm School Improvement Plan presentation. And for folks that may not be tracking as closely as we on the committee do, we, at our last meeting, we had the school improvement plan presentations from both the Fort River Elementary School team, administration team, as well as the Wildwood administration team. And so last but not least is Crocker Farm, so welcome.
Thank you.
Let me know what you would like to display. I'm not sure if you want to go through every one, but.
No, I'm hoping this will be brief, if possible, but not that brevity is my specialty. So my name's Derek Shea. I'm the principal at Crocker Farm. Hello, everyone. Hello, Jennifer. Can I just backtrack to earlier conversation? I think I would, it would be remiss if parents in my school community didn't have me say that, I'm just saying this out loud, that, you know, you know, the budget and monies and various decisions, you know, we're looking at a grade three configuration next year of two classes, moving from three to two with forty-seven students and respectively twenty-three and twenty-four in a class. So I'm just saying this out loud in terms of context of all of the different decisions that have to be made or have been made. So that's just something that, you know, when I start thinking about what I'm going to be worrying about after tomorrow at twelve-thirty. So anyway, I just, I felt like I needed to say that because it's definitely something that's still sitting in my department. Also, I just wanted to mention that at Crocker Farm this summer, it'll be the first time in, I think, twelve or thirteen years that they want to have summer school at Crocker Farm. So it will give Crocker Farm a little bit of an opportunity to get a little bit of a sharper clean than we've had in previous years. And one of the things they're going to do is they're actually going to remove the rest of the cubbies from the classrooms that they've got in the hallway, and it will allow the classrooms to have a bigger space. The rooms are already quite nice, but this will allow for perhaps larger class size, as I mentioned earlier. But that's something that's a project we're looking forward to this summer. And then just one other quick thing, sort of my news before we talk about improvement plan. We did, in fact, have our sixth grade moving on ceremony today. And I just wanted to give a little shout out to two of my custodians, Chris and Brian. And Ben knows them very well. And the two of them were there super, super early this morning, I'm thinking six or earlier, whatever, to make sure, we did the ceremony outside, and they were there to make sure we were helping getting chairs and all the various pieces of equipment that needed to be sorted out, different speakers and wires. So I'm not sure, Benning, I'm sorry, Brian and Chris are at home watching tonight, but I do want to make sure they get a little bit of love because the, our school doesn't function without their wonderful support. School improvement plan, it's less than ideal. So this is the twenty-three, twenty-eight piece. We've been on a fairly decent track for the last five years with a plan that we're trying to stick to. We're trying to maintain some focus rather than sort of jumping around. I think this, Doug, you just slide up a little bit more in terms of our objectives. Just a couple of thoughts. One is that I don't think it's particularly ideal for someone like myself to be sitting here talking through all of the wonderful work that we're trying to do in our building. I'm hoping in the fall, a couple of things, maybe invite us back. And I bring a whole cadre of my teachers and counselors and various other folks who can speak with far greater eloquence than I can about the stuff that we're trying to accomplish in our school. And the other thing I've said over the years, and I'll stick to this, and I know you all have other things to do in your lives, but you will learn ten times more about what we're doing just come to the school for a little. And this is not like to guilt you into doing that, but if you come by for an hour or two one day, I am very happy. And I know a bunch of my teachers and counselors and other folks who'd be happy support staff to just get a feel for what it's like to be in the building for a couple of hours. And you will actually probably see some of what's up in this piece of paper up here in terms of our instructional practices, you know, the connections that we're trying to develop. If you watch someone like Melissa Conde, our front office secretary, how she engages with families in multiple languages each day long, you'll see all that stuff happening, how we help students when they're doing well and when they're struggling. So again, fall comes around, and I'm less tired, and I can bring a bunch of my people. I would love to be able to brag or boast about what we're trying to do. And also, I would happily host for a little tour, a little walk around. So as you can see, I think what we're trying to do is we're trying to work with our instructional practices. I think IREDI, and I can speak to Crocker, I can't speak to the other schools, although I hear really good things. IREDI has been a fabulous, a fabulous find, and I think there's a lot of success happening in the school already with that work that's been brought in. Our teachers have really spent a lot of time this year working with our math coach and with each other to implement this curriculum, so that's part of growing our instructional practices. People are very, very bought in and very willing to do this work. I think you'll see again that what we're trying to do here is we're trying to cultivate connections among students, staff, families, and our community. We want Crocker Farm to continue to be a place where people feel a sense of belonging. So for example, one of the things that we're going to continue to practice in the fall is that we're going to continue to practice our circle work with our teachers, with our students. And we're going to start to bring in families and invite families to come in to do some circle work in the evening. And what's the point of that? The point of that, I think, is just to sort of grow relationships, get a sense as to what people are interested in and what they're interested in hearing from us and what they're interested in having the school do. So we have a number of parents who are bilingual parents, who can help us bring in as many families as possible who are willing to sort of join this practice. So again, that's part of one of those initiatives. We can jump over to the well-being of students. It's interesting that Ruthie's still here in the audience as a school adjustment counselor, counselor. I feel very fortunate to have a fantastic team of support staff and counselors at my school. We use all of those things that just sit up there right now. We use second step, we use mindfulness. We're very much into restorative practices in our school. We are very much interested in spending time trying to understand some of the difficulties and the trauma that students are experiencing and how we respond to some of those challenges in a very sort of culturally responsive way. How do we do all of this work? So I just, I'll say one more thing and then I'll stop. Again, I feel very fortunate at our school, and this is why in the fall I would encourage you to invite us back. We have three very active committees in our school who basically run the work of the school. We have a teaching and learning committee, we have a social justice committee, and we have a well-being committee. And a small number of those folks get a decent, decent, I shouldn't say that. They get a small stipend for being part of that committee. A large number of people just. A large number of people just step up and help and support. And I think five or six years ago, when Jen Smith, my assistant principal, I sort of landed on this process with everyone, I think it's a very important part of how our school runs. It's a very, I hope to think, democratic institution. These committees help frame the work, help bring the professional development to our staff, and help make sure that we are all interested and involved in what we're doing. So I want to give a big shout out, I won't go any name names, but all of the folk that are involved in those committees, this is how the work transfers into the building. It's not me standing up and saying something or Jen Smith, it's these three groups of folks tremendously well-led. I'm tired of babbling, I apologize. The last thing I just want to say is we're trying our hardest to stay focused on a small number of initiatives. I'm just finishing, or tomorrow I'll finish my twenty-sixth year in this district. For many years, I just was very tired and exhausted by us jumping all over the place. And I don't mean just at Crocker Farm, I mean all over the place, in terms of the various schools I've been at. We are trying to establish some criteria to stay focused on the work that we think we want to do. It doesn't mean we're static, it means that, you know, our learning and our expertise, it will come through practice and refinement and adjustment, but we're trying to stay focused on what we think makes our school a good place. I'll stop.
Thank you.
Can I go home now? No, sorry.
Questions or comments? Peter?
Yeah, I just want to thank you and everybody who worked on this. As a proud veteran of the Crocker Farm School Governance Council from many years ago, I know how many hours that group puts in, and it's great to see the names of past teachers and past leaders in our district and parents and speech-language pathologists, just everywhere across. You did a great job assembling that team and going through all of the different slides. You know, we would be here for many hours if we gave proper due to every one of the rows here, and it's just a testament to how deep you've gone. I love what you said about, you know, stay focused on a few things and make sure that you're doing those things right. I think Crocker Farm's in a great place to do that because you have been there for so long, you know? And so you, at this point, you know how it ticks, you know what needs to be left alone and what needs to be improved. Like you said, that's not, that doesn't mean it's static, but, you know, it's, the best management style sometimes is not to go every year and just, you know, rewrite the whole book of everything. So I think you've done a great job laying all that out here. I guess I'm just curious about, you know, some of the items here about family engagement, the idea of family needs assessment and how you use that, it's really interesting. But, you know, since you are along in the tooth as in the Crocker Farm principal gig, and you've seen, you know, different approaches to how you engage families and especially families that have maybe a little bit more trouble engaging with the school community, how, you know, what have you found is, are there common themes, do you think, that are successful? Or is there no secret sauce, and you just have to roll up sleeves and get down to business? And I'm just really interested to hear about your experience with that.
Thank you, Peter. Just go back to your earlier point. I have a very good team at my school. We have people who want to work there and want to be there, and that's why it works. And I play a little bit of part in sort of every day, you know, getting my sixteen thousand steps in and sort of going around and sticking my nose in things, but we have a very strong staff and, you know, I love our school very much, and I think that's an important piece. To go back to what you were asking, look, there's people who are talented in lots of different, what I would call, areas of our school. So for example, in the front office, our three secretaries in the front, you couldn't find three nicer people who you will feel incredibly welcome coming to the office if you have to sort of be there for any reason. And I certainly see people, for example, come and they knock on the front door or they buzz, and I can see the hesitation in the people who are coming for the first time. That hesitation goes away quite rapidly. Melissa Conde, Kathy Aldridge, Suzanne, they are absolutely amazing at making people feel comfortable right away. I then jump out to my ELL team, right? So I have an ELL team that speaks multiple languages, is very comfortable getting on the telephone and speaking with parents, having sometimes difficult conversations with them about things that are happening in school. Again, my counselors are very willing to engage. So what works, I think, is that people are willing to have conversations with folks, are willing to say, hey, can you come up to the school? We even go out and visit people to see folks. But I think there has to be this genuine willingness and appreciation that engagement with families truly matters, because you cannot fake that stuff. If you just think that's something that someone wrote in some book, you know, I remember Karen Matt wrote a book, and I forget the name of the book, I think it was Beyond the Bake Sale. If you're a teacher or a counselor or a secretary and you can't be bothered with that stuff, you will get found out. Our people are really interested and want genuine to relate. So being genuine is probably the most important piece, and you have to be skilled at being able to talk with people from all walks of life. It's a part that we take pride in. We need to get a little better, and we will get better. Our last needs assessment ten years ago, I think we got like eighty-two percent return rate, which is like ridiculously good. Says eighty-five up there, that's Jen Smith said, I wanted a hundred, but she's much more, she's smarter than me, actually. So, but yeah, you've got to be genuine, you've got to want to do it, you've got to have some skills.
Thank you.
Earth?
I really, Derek, I really appreciate...
Thanks for seeing you.
...what you've said. Also, was, this is one of the first years that I've missed the graduation...
I know that, I was looking for you this morning, sorry.
It was one of those days.
Yeah.
It didn't work out.
Yeah.
Put it that way. But I too was on the school governance council at Crocker Farm.
Yeah.
That's how I got started with public service. The other thing is both of my children went through Crocker Farm. I appreciate all the work when I look at this. It's a tremendous amount of work that's going in, into all of this. But the thing that's most impressive is your enthusiasm and your commitment that you bring to the table and relationship, not only for Crocker Farm but for your staff. That is really important, and I think that just permeates everything you say.
Thank you.
I'll just add my thanks to that, to what everybody else has said, and definitely, I made a note, Derek, that we, when we start agenda planning for the fall, we'd love to have you and your team back, maybe have an update from all three schools, but yes, definitely. I'm curious, I appreciate your comment about focusing, so, you know, to one manage and, you know, do it well and get it done well. What do you see as challenges with that going forward, particularly given the comments that you opened with before describing the school improvement plan?
Sure.
Yep.
Yeah. It's a really good question. So here's an example, and hopefully I'll say this in a way that is respectful of the evolving curricular needs of the system, right? So I think perhaps we had a dialogue last year where one of the things that happened is that the iReady math piece came up, and we said, right, for this year, we're going to truly focus on iReady, and there'll be nothing else you have to worry about. That's not how schools work, right? Because kids bring the darndest things to school every day, and I know in my school we need to be consistently up in our game in lots of areas that involve, for example, the social-emotional needs of our children, right? So you can't just focus on like iReady every staff meeting or every early release. And then just to add to that, and this is all good stuff, and it's the way it's supposed to be. We had certainly a little bit of feedback from some of our teachers today, correctly so, that we're already starting to pilot, and you all probably know this, we're starting to pilot some new language arts curricular work for next year. And, well, that's really important and necessary. We've just added something else that wasn't on our place, and it hasn't really been mentioned in this because we finished writing this up prior to, there was a final commitment that we were going to take a look at piloting a few things. Now, again, I got a letter from the central office folks saying today that a number of the Crocker Farm teachers had stepped up and said we will volunteer to do this, it's a K through two pilot, some in the reading, some in the writing. And so what we just have to be careful about is that we don't overtax our folks and ask them to be doing too much. People really want to get better. Crocker Farm's a lovely little place, Fort River's a beautiful place, Wildwood, we're all good places, we all want to get better, but we all just have to be careful we don't just ask too much of everyone, right, to be doing too many new things at once. Hopefully that helps answer a little bit of your question. I think another thing would be if you've got lots of transition in the folks that are in your building. And again, I think, you know, some of you may, if one of you may have said something earlier, we feel like we're in a really good place, where we're going to have a number of people who will be in our building for a decent number of years, and that will help. I think if people start departing, then it becomes a problem.
Thank you. Any other questions? No? Okay.
Can I just finish by saying, I don't want you thinking that we think we're the bee's knees, because we're not. We're halfway decent and we're good, but we want to keep getting better. In three, four years, when this all comes back, the twenty-eight, I hope that we've crushed it further. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
He's got the next topic, too.
Oh, he does? Okay.
Switching notebooks, I think.
Yeah. So this topic, actually, it might have been you, Peter, that had requested this at the end of last year, as something that we wanted to hear about this year, and we've been trying to get it on the agenda since the beginning of the fall. We were challenged in finding individuals who were comfortable coming forward and talking about it, not because of the Amherst community climate, but more about national climate. So given recent events and conversation challenges in our community, thought that we should really make it a priority to get, to talk about this before the end of the school year. So really appreciate, Doug, your help in helping get this agenda item, and Derek, if you're going to be speaking to us, really appreciate you joining us this evening to talk about that.
Seems I've lost my internet connection, so that is limiting a little bit of what I'm seeing here. All right. I'll put it... Right. Okay. There we go. There we go. What would you like?
Well, can I just say a few words first before you put something up there?
Yeah, please.
Is that helpful? So I didn't really volunteer to come tonight, I was asked to come tonight to speak to this. It wasn't like I put my hand up and said, can I come to school committee?
Well, I'm told.
Hope you enjoy my humor. So I'll just, again, history's important to understand things before you get to where you are today and stuff. So I just want to mention real briefly a little history as to how I was asked to just bring something forward here tonight. So close to ten years ago, nine, ten years ago, we happened to engage with some people in the community, a particular family in the community who had moved to Massachusetts from a state that was not particularly friendly in ways of respecting everyone's rights. And they moved to Massachusetts and were nationally involved with some organizations that were looking at how gender is viewed in the United States of America, and they were involved for personal reasons and professional reasons. So this is two thousand thirteen, fourteen. And so these folks came to Crocker Farm, and they put on, over the course of a couple of years, a couple of wonderful trainings that were exposing our staff to some further knowledge and information about the rights, particularly of transgender youth in the United States. And in particular, we had two trainings from a family member of these folks that we knew quite well, a twenty-year-old college student who'd come in and did some fabulous work with our staff. I still have the slides from the training right here. And so this was, you know, nine, ten years ago, so great exposure for our staff a fairly lengthy period ago. Jump forward a few years, we got in touch with folks, probably perhaps around two seven team, we get in touch with the folks at Safe Schools, which is a part of DESI's organization. Jason Wheeler was involved in it, and I don't remember if Jason's still involved now, but we asked the folks at Safe Schools if they would be interested in coming to our school again to give us perhaps further training or what's the latest information, particularly again thinking about gender rights, transgender matters that were flooding throughout the state. A wonderful person by the name of Hillary Montague, who was based at UMass at the time, was the liaison for Safe Schools, and Hillary came in and did two fabulous trainings at school. Hillary did a training for our K through two aged teachers population, and then did a training for the upper elementary. And again, at some point, I can send you Hillary's slides, wonderful information. Just right about that time, perhaps in the spring of two thousand eighteen, we had a small number of parents who wrote to myself and to Tara, our guidance counselor, and I forget someone else, and they were basically expressing some joy at some of, because we sent home some of this information that we were learning with teachers, but they expressed some concern about the health education curriculum that we were using in our school, and I think in all the schools. And if my memory serves me, I think it was called the Great Body Shop, but is that right? Which, again, remember, the health education standards, I think, are based from nineteen ninety-nine, which is a different century, if truth be told. And so these parents had written and said, listen, some great stuff that we're hearing about what you're all doing, however, the health education, particularly the sort of sexuality education stuff, it's awful, it's really outdated, it needs work, we're not impressed. So we said, okay, no worries, I don't have time to do anything about it right now, but let's get together in the fall and see if we can think through this. So in the fall of two thousand eighteen, Jen Smith, assistant principal, Tara, our guidance counselor, a number of teachers, you know, Mr. James, our P.E. teacher, was involved, and a decent number of parents started to get together, and over a period of four, five, six months, helped come up with curriculum ideas that we were going to implement at our school. And this is maybe perhaps where Doug can, if you put in the three Rs, or the, it's probably worth just looking there. This is an organization, rights, respect, and responsibility, fabulous organization. This is where the cohort of people who worked at Crocker, they're using, they used a large percentage of this organization's lessons, they're all free to download, to help build this curriculum that we were going to present to our four, five, and six, grade four, five, and six students at Crocker Farm. We also, and again, you know, we knew that the previous curriculums had incomplete biological information, there was flaws in the teaching. The previous stuff emphasized previously only sort of heterosexual parenting and families rather than biology, and I think, I mean, the previous stuff definitely perpetuated gender stereotypes, and again, was limited to a heterosexual narrative. This stuff helped sort of blow that out of the water and just sort of like open the doors to all sorts of fabulous learning and experiences. So what ended up happening is over the course of those five or six months, all those folks got together, utilized a lot of materials from this organization, utilized materials from also an... The previous stuff emphasized previously only sort of heterosexual parenting and, and families rather than biology. And I think, I mean, the previous stuff definitely perpetuated gender stereotypes and, and, and again, was li- limited to a heterosexual narrative. This stuff helped sort of blow that out of the water and just sort of like open the doors to, to all sorts of fabulous learning and, and experiences. So what ended up happening is over the course of those five or six months, all those folks got together, utilized a lot of materials from this organization, utilized materials from also an organization called, oh my goodness, I'll get my glasses, Our Whole Lives, which I think is connected to a, a Unitarian organization. And it was really Our Whole Lives, a lifespan of sexuality education. And I did think I put that, yeah, I did actually. So they, they actually used some of the, the vocab and some, some of the, the, the words from this organization as well. They developed a curriculum. We, in the spring of 2019, wrote a letter to families to basically say that we were going to be beginning to do three lessons in fourth grade, fifth grade and sixth grade. And we then, and this is where all you folks would come in handy in this, we then realized that there was a 2008, October 16, 2008, and s- school policy from the, I'm assuming, school committee writes these things, Doug, is that right?
Yep.
And it basically says that each year, parents' guardians would provide a brief written description of the curriculum covering this policy. We actually gave parents the opportunity to come, because it was in a binder, to come and look at it in the school prior to presenting it. But also the policy in the school department says that essentially, if you don't want your student to be part of this, you can exempt them. I have to be honest with you, not my favorite thing to be exempted from things, but I can probably count in this hand how many kids have been exempted in the, in the years we've been doing this. We, we missed some COVID time, obviously. So essentially, we've been presenting this curriculum in classrooms, four, five and six. And when I say we, myself, P E teacher, guidance counselors, classroom teachers, people from across all domains in our school go to these lessons. And the whole idea, I think, is to bring a curriculum that I think helps students learn at each grade level and inclusive of all genders and sexual orientation. And, and I think it, it's wonderfully done. There, there, there's, there's material in here that I think is certainly uncomfortable for our youngsters to learn, but, but fabulous stuff. So that's where we're at. I even asked Tara, our guidance counselor, today, I said, Tara, when we were during COVID times, what happened? And she says, well, we definitely did the lessons for sixth grade, that's for sure, because we felt we needed to get to them. So, there's new portions to these lessons that this organization have developed recently. We're about to incorporate them back into this unit. We just finished, you know, maybe about a month back. We are very happy, and I think we've been asked to perhaps share some of these curriculum materials with the other schools. We're very happy to get together with folks to talk about them. We're, I'm very happy to actually leave this document here tonight to pass around. Most of it you can see in this other website. And that's probably it. So anyway, we're, we're, we're all in with this stuff. It, it, we're, there'll be no retreat. We're pretty happy with the material, I think our students are happy, our teachers are happy. We're hoping that it's going to be, and it is helpful.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You, you mentioned something right at the very end, which was actually my first question. So this, these curricular materials that you're using at Crocker Farm right now, they're not being used at the other schools, or?
I, I certainly can say that I think we, the, the Wildwood folks over the course of the last period of time have been asking, I mean, this is not a private document, this is, this is just our document that we put together. You know, s- another school may want to, you know, use this same organization and, and think about it slightly differently, but the easiest thing you do at some point would be for someone to make multiple copies of this. And, and, and then perhaps what needs to happen is the various, you know, Ruthie's team and, and Tara from my team and various other folks get together and, and establish, you know, a cohesive norm for this. But I know Tara and a, and a group of my team are very, it's hard to find time right, right, because there's always so many things going on, talk about focus. But, yeah, we think it's important that it, that it become, you know, larger.
Peter? Well, so first of all, thank you for coming and, and talking about this. Allison touched on it at the beginning of the meeting, but, you know, the, the national pressure and the, the level of national attacks that educators, school committee superintendents, staff receive just for talking about these topics at the elementary level is very real. And, you know, and has been getting worse in, in the last six or seven years. So I di- I didn't want people to think that we didn't have staff who are passionate about this topic and, and want to support student rights, and that's, that's not the case. It's, it's really about, you know, the, the, the sad reality of retribution that occurs in a very negative way. So, so thank you for, for bringing the topic. You know, there's, there's a lot that we could go into here and, you know, I'm certainly not an expert in either of these curriculums, but it is really heartening to see some of the principles that, that are laid out here. And one of the most important ones that I, I, I really resonated with me from the, from the of rights, respect, responsibility site is at every stage of their development, children have the right, the right to age-appropriate information about health, sexuality and relationships. And, you know, I, I just think back to like my generation and when I was going to school and the idea that, that, that there was age-appropriate information about sexuality was just, was, was not, not part of the culture. Or that children have a, a right to it. And, and it's, it's only after, I think, talking to educators that you really understand that this isn't a radical notion. You know, like when you're four or five years old, it's, it's a good thing to know what consent is and that your body is your body and how you interact with adults, most of whom have, you know, authority over you. And, and that the world is, and how to navigate the world like that. So I think this is, this is really, this is really important. It, it does surprise me a little bit that we don't have more consistency across our elementary schools. I, I certainly think that that would be something worthwhile to, to explore for thinking about areas. I, I know you just spoke of not wanting to focus on too many things at the same time, but if, if there were some things that we could do to, you know, at least, at least lessons learned so we could get kind of a consistent experience for kids, that would be something, something to think about. And I guess I, which leads you to my, my other question. And so I had asked our middle school, middle school principal a similar question about onboarding. And so, you know, for me, training is great, a presentation is great, a meeting is great, but it's like, it's a point in time thing that happens in a community. And a school, as you know, is a constantly shifting, changing community. You know, your, your staff next year aren't going to be the staff you have, a- and they won't be the same staff at the beginning and at the end of the year. And so I just, I didn't know if you had thoughts about, you know, when you onboard staff in, in any position really, who are going to be interacting with children, how do we, how do we set the expectations, right? That you might not be teaching these classes, but, but this, here we believe, right? This is our expectation of every caregiver, this is how we feel and this is part of our, our supportive culture.
Yeah, I, you know, I think it's a, it's a, Peter, it's a fabulously well-connected question, right, to the larger. Now, I'm not here to talk about the larger stuff that's going on around, right? But I, I, it perhaps will sound like this when I answer it this way. Look, one of the things that, that, so two things. One is that I, I, I want to continue to say this on behalf of our staff, is that when, and, and I know this happens at Fort River as well, right? Is that, is that, for example, one of the things that people are really trying to get continuity around the, the, the systems with our counselors is, is, is thinking about how we look at our trauma-informed work and how we're utilizing, you know, skills, whatever it may be. And it takes time for that to happen. It takes time in people's work lives to be able to get in space, to be able to talk about these things. So again, this work only happens because you've got a commitment from people to, to stay after school and, and do 3:30 till 4:30 meetings and, and, and not get paid terribly lots of money for it. So, so, so I just want to say that first of all. But to get, answer your question, and I, and I perhaps is not the way you would think this is going to be, perhaps, I'm not sure. But I've been thinking of this a lot recently, right? I'm very interested in the whole aspect of how we, how we hire and bring people into our building, right? I am very interested in what we learn about people when we're trying to have them become part of our team. Because anytime you come to work in a school, and, and I think it's changed in the 25 years, the 26 years I've been around here, you're not coming in to shut the door and do your own thing. You have to be willing to come in and be part of a team. There's definitely been some people, and this is where I think you have to also develop a, a, an atmosphere. And this is what Hillary Montague did, who I mentioned earlier, who was a person from UMass who came and did training with her staff. Hillary set up the trainings in such a way that people felt comfortable asking difficult questions. People put their hand up, and, and I was there when this happened, and asked questions that they perhaps wouldn't want to ask because they're going to be saying, well, you can't ask that. And so there has to be this ability, right, for people to be able to feel uncomfortable, but also know that if you're going to be working in our school, these are the things that we're going to be doing, right? And, and so again, I, I think you have to set up good processes for bringing people in and then when folks come in, and if, again, I, I'm more interested in behaviors than I am about beliefs, right? How, how you present yourself is really important, right? People's beliefs, I, it's not my business. But how you, how you work as a team player and how you, you know, conduct yourself is really important. The hiring process is really important, and it's really important that you're willing to be a team player, to, to be part of, of what's going on in your building. Not everyone loves everything that goes on all the time. But you have to be part of it if you're a team player.
Thank you.
Thanks. Erv?
Derek, you, you said something that's pretty interesting to me. And I, and I, the question came into my mind is, so what is the onbo- onboarding process at Crocker Farm for new staff? Because, because any organization, if you're onboarding process, is not really, if it really isn't excellent, then you lose a lot. You know, you just lose, you lose momentum in terms of bringing on new staff. You, you lose time in terms of integration into a cult, you lose all kinds of things. So I'm interested in what, what onboarding process does Crocker Farm use? Or even one that you would even suggest?
I mean, I, I think you're asking me new questions that are above my pay skill and a Thursday night before the end of the year. But, but I will, I will say this, that, look, I, I, I think time is really important with, with, with people when they first come to work in a school, right? And when I say time, and, and we don't have, you know, billions and billions of dollars, right? But it's very important that people have the time to be able to, to meet with other people, particularly before you come to work in, in a, in a school for the very first time. And I think we allocate at this point perhaps one or two days at the beginning of someone's career when they move here, right? It, it's probably a tad on the short side, to be perfectly honest with you. We, we, we also like to make sure, and again, I'm glad Ruthie's here because you're representative of, of, of the, of the teaching council profession. I was just meeting with some teachers today who were saying to me, Derek, I'm about to move to a different grade next year. When are you going to give me some time over the summer to be able, and this is part of onboarding, when am I going to be on boarded to move to this next grade? And how can I get some sort of, what's the word, compensation for the work that I need to do over the summer? So it, it, being in a school and teaching, it's a 24/7, seven-day-a-week, it's not a 10-month job, it's a 12-month job. So, perhaps a wishy-washy answer, but I do think there's, there's an important aspect of, of particularly, you know, newer folks going on board that they have time to, 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 and we do some of that. I think we probably need to grow it and make it bigger. Because there's so many things that you have to be, quote, an expert in to be working in an elementary school, way too many. And it's overwhelming when young people start or new people start.
Right.
Yeah.
It's interesting this gets brought up today because I spent a decent amount of time talking to a couple of different people about the same topic today and thinking about some things that we are currently doing, what we may be, may need to be doing to our summer planning, that sort of thing. I had a conversation with Nick Gaffey today about, about exactly that topic, about people that are, are, because we're shifting and, and changing how many classrooms at different grade levels and that sort of thing, and reducing staff, teaching staff and readjusting where they are. You know, he, he posed the same question that, that Derek's faculty posed to, to him today. And that's like, can we get together and have a conversation and, and, and spend some time, you know, acclimating to a new grade level? It's a bigger, it's a bigger deal than I think people realize sometimes when a, when a teacher switches a grade level. You know, it's not the difficulty of the material. They, they know third grade math versus fourth grade math, it's not that that's the issue, it's about how do you teach it well? And what are the, the differences and the nuance of this? And, and for that matter also, you know, you're working with a different group of teachers in your grade level. And how does that team interact and work and coordinate and, and synchronize what they're trying to do and how they're approaching, you know, the same curriculum? And that's, it, it is a thing that, that I'm looking at, literally, I told Nick today, like, I'll get you an answer tomorrow about whether we have some resources between the last day of school, I mean, Tuesday of next week and the end of the month. Do we have some resources in fiscal '23 budget to do some of that kind of work? So I'll say that to you too, Derek, and I'm sure, Ruthie, if you could share that with Tammy at, at Fort River. I'm going to be looking at that question because everybody's got it, that question, because they've all got different pieces that they're working with that way. And if we can, you know, if we have a, a little resource here at the end of the year to sort of afford that time for our existing staff that are having some change, you know, we'll try to, try to make it available to them and, and have them do that kind of work and, and prepare them. But I've also had conversations about, you know, those days before, before school starts. And I think, you know, we have a two-day period right now for brand-new staff that come to the district. We have two days that we currently set aside for that. And, and I think, you know, we're due to retune that. I would say that, and I think, you know, there'd be no disagreement at all with regard to, to that. I think that there are aspects of that two days that are very mechanical. Have you got all your payroll paperwork filled out? Do you know how to log in and put in time and ASAP if you need a day off? Did you get registered with MTRS for your retirement with our district? Have you logged into the network? Do you know what your, your username and password are and setting those and how that works? Have you logged into your Google? I mean, there's really, there's that sort of stuff that is horrifically boring, but absolutely necessary. And, and it's high volume and very quickly gone over. And there are other deeper, richer conversations that need to happen as well that I think, you know, we as a district, I think all districts struggle with this, like how much of that and when can we do it? And I think the other question that, that gets posed and certainly, you know, me and the business office thinks about this relative to the mechanics of, of executing like, you know, new staff that are time clock, time clock employees, clocking in, clocking out, one of the rules around that was our, our process. And, and how do we update and integrate people to come not in the first day? So with our teaching staff, the lion's share are hired in the summer. They are able to come to those couple of days before the first, first day of school. But what happens when somebody gets hired in October? Because we couldn't hire them in the summer and it happens in October. It's like, you know, they're, they're jumping in the race in the middle and trying to.
Okay, just interrupt, I'm, I'm just getting concerned because we're creeping really far away from health curriculum and onboarding about sort of those principles, so.
I'm sorry, it's, it's, it's been on my mind today because I've had several conversations, but thank you for that reminder about, about agenda topic. But nonetheless, it, it is something we're thinking about trying to take into account. And, and so to tie it back to this in particular, the idea of sharing this curriculum and having those conversations across the, the, the district are, are relevant ones. And I'll certainly take that back to our, our curriculum director, who will be full year this year, starting in July. So she'll have a little more time to spend hopefully on things like this and maybe adding this to the mix of, of things she's going to try to, to, to work on and, and bring forward. So, you know, then, then it's a matter of identifying and dedicating resources to, to, to get people up to speed and, and to continue to reinvest in that continuous improvement and, and training, retuning, refining of process and procedure and curriculum and all of those things.
Thanks. Any other questions? No? Okay. Well, thank you again.
Yeah.
Did you want to say something?
No, I just want to say one last thing, just again, shout out to the, the, the process, right? Because I, I, again, whatever we do with all of this work that we're trying to do, I think the processes are really important. And I think in this particular situation, two really important things happened. One is that a fairly decent contingent number of staff at our, our school stepped up to, to be part of committee to make this curriculum piece work. But also, where it originated is a fabulous place. Parents were concerned about stuff that we were not doing well, and they spoke up and they asked us to take a look at it, and then the change happened. And I think it's a great story as well, right? And, and the two particular parents, I won't name their names, they know who they are. I think they brought some great voice to the conversation that sort of pushed us to a place where we needed to do better and make some change. So I'll be forever indebted to them for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good summer.
Okay. Moving on to our next item, which is the superintendent evaluation timeline. Normally at this time, we would be, we would have heard an artifacts presentation. Um, normally at this time we would be, we would have heard an artifacts presentation, um, uh, from the superintendent in order for us to complete our evaluation. Um, I know that another committee made a decision on the timeline to, um, pa- pause indefinitely, and, I shouldn't say indefinitely, but to come back at it, um, in, when we reconvene in August, um, and make a determination at that time for, for the timeline. Um, I just remind that for folks that weren't on the committee during COVID, um, in, for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year, um, we did, we did the same. We, um, given the circumstances, we did not complete the evaluation until September, October timeframe, um, of twenty twenty. So, um, I just, because we, we normally are completing an evaluation of the superintendent at this time of year, wanted to have this on the, on the agenda just to talk about and, and sort of gain alignment on, on that timeline for this, um, this year's evaluation. So I'm looking around for input ideas. Peter?
Yeah, I mean, given that the region has, has made that decision, um, and we're, we're all on the region, um, yeah, I think just, it just makes the simplest, most straightforward sense to postpone and then, um, and then, uh, do as you say, re- retake it up, uh, retake it up in August.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. So we will, um, connect back at, um, our earliest meeting in the new school year. Next is the, um, fiscal year twenty-three budget update. So this is the fiscal year that it's about to end in a couple of weeks. Um, it, I don't know if, Doug, if this is, I don't see anything attached, so it's not a fourth quarter update that we will get in the fall, presumably.
It was aspirational, and, uh, I was, so I was hoping to have some things for you to, to review today, uh, relative to where we sit in our budget and, and, uh, perhaps ask you to move some resources between, uh, budget areas, but I did not get that done in time for tonight's meeting and, and certainly not with enough time for you to, to think about it and, and, and agree to it and vote on it. So, um, yes, it'll have to be something we, we wait and keep until your first meeting in August, we'll discuss that. And the short story is, do I think, you know, are we in a bind and not able to finish our year under budget, which is required? Uh, no, we're not going to run out of money. Um, are we going to be probably closer in pa- than in past years? That's likely to be the case. Um, you know, we're in the process right now of working through, um, as mentioned, the sort of tentative agreement, so we're reviewing and, and preparing as best we can to do retroactive payments to folks, um, and, and, uh, you know, trying to get, you know, all the final bills in and, and trying to get a sense of, of those things that we've, uh, encumbered or set aside, and, and how many of those will come to fruition, many of them will, a few won't, um, and see where we sit relative to our budget. But the short story is, you know, will we finish on or under budget? Yes, we will. Um, uh, and as I said, you know, in the previous topic, and, and, you know, I, if, if resources are available and we can use them to, in this last few days of, of June, to do some work with our, our teaching staff, and they're able and available and willing, um, you know, we'll, we'll commit those resources to those, those purposes. Um, because there's, you know, as, as you said, there's, there's piloting of, of potential writing and reading curriculum that we're looking at in the coming year, continue to work with, with iReady, and then of course with, with the budget, like it is, the changes to staff, as far as grade level and teams and buildings and all of that, um, just need for people to kind of get together and, and wrap their head around that, that change.
Um, I, I do have a question, you're talking about the retroactive payments, we, we don't execute those payments until after the agreement has been signed or approved, ratified by both parties, correct?
That is correct. And, and the other thing that may be, um, bit of a nuance of the, of the work, um, one of the things schools can do is what's called deferred payment. So, um, a number of staff, uh, you know, they're under essentially a ten-month contract, but they can choose to be paid over a full year's timeframe. So, um, they can choose to be paid in twenty-six payments, we pay every other, every two weeks. Um, and so because of that, the, the compensation that they receive in the summer, so they essentially get smaller checks all year long, but then they get checks through the summer. And the other thing, we actually pay all of our staff that way, and, and it evens out and smooths out things for people, it's much more easy for folks to budget, a number of different things like that. But the other piece of, of that is that when we are paying people in July and August, it's technically in a new fiscal year, and so there's an accounting procedure I have to go through to essentially what they call book and reverse. In other words, we book this expense in one year and we reverse that and book it into another year. Um, and so that's how when, you know, we'll make those payments in, uh, most likely in July, uh, for the, uh, for the retroactive pay for folks, but when we report to the state our spending for fiscal twenty-three, we'll include all of that, so we will sort of move that, uh, in an accounting, uh, procedure to, to the fiscal year in which we actually committed the funds, were appropriated the funds and spent the funds.
That, you would just answer my question, because I was like, what happens if it's after June thirty? Um, okay, thank you.
There are other things we can't do that with, pay is one of them. So on the other hand, if we were to buy paper, it's got to be here and on hand by the thirtieth of June. We can make, essentially, we can write checks, uh, for the previous fiscal year until, I want to say, the fifteenth of July. So they recognize that stuff comes in late and you've got to pay that bill out of the previous fiscal year. So for, you know, material goods and services and that sort of stuff, we have essentially one last, uh, accounts payable warrant that we can do in, you know, that, where the checks are cut in July, but actually apply to and pertain to the previous fiscal year.
Got it. Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Uh, great. Uh, future agenda planning is next. So, um, we had had a meeting, um, planned for, penciled in, I think for the twenty-seventh, and it was, um, I think tentatively, I haven't gotten together with the chair of the regional school committee yet, that, but it had been tentatively planned as a joint meeting. So I, I think given, uh, our previous conversation during superintendent's update about, uh, budget for F Y twenty-four, that we do want to at least have a brief meeting to, to look at that. Um, if there's any, if, if, I, that's only two weeks from now.
It's maternity.
A week and a half. Um, so if by chance there's an F Y twenty-three update, we could talk about it then as well. Um, otherwise, that will be a first and then thing. Um, I think the other topic is, um, to at least look at a tentative calendar for meetings for the next year so that we, when we all leave, we have a rough idea of when, when our meetings, um, will be. Um, so those are the things that I had. Any? It can probably be a pretty brief meeting, but, okay. Uh, warrant report. I have some warrants, hopefully my eyes will cooperate. I apologize, it looks like I have a lot since our last meeting. Um, oops. I, Allison McDonald, authorized by my signature payables in the amount of, oops, payroll, sorry, um, payroll, uh, in the amount of seven hundred and seventy-two thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars and sixty-nine cents for a warrant dated May seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, and I signed it on May nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. I, Allison McDonald, authorized by my signature payables in the amount of four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and one dollars and twenty-two cents for a warrant dated May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, and I signed that on May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. I, Allison McDonald, authorized by my signature, uh, Fort River transfer request in the amount of five thou- five thous- five thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars and forty-four cents for a transfer dated June first, twenty twenty-three, and I signed that on June second, twenty twenty-three. I, Allison McDonald, authorized by my signature Fort River transfer request in the amount of one thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixty cents for a transfer dated June sixth, twenty-three, and I signed that on June seventh, twenty twenty-three. I, Allison McDonald, authorized by my signature Wildwood transfer request in the amount of two thousand dollars for a transfer dated June eighth, twenty twenty-three, and I signed that on June tenth, twenty twenty-three. I, Allison McDonald, sign, authorized by my signature payables in the amount of, sorry, I'm going to increase the size of this. Payables in the amount of three thousand six hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-nine cents for a warrant dated May thirty-first, twenty-three. This includes general fund expenses of three thousand six hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-nine cents. I signed that on June twelfth, twenty twenty-three. And last, I authorized by my signature payables in the amount of payroll, sorry, in the amount of seven hundred and seventy-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars and thirty-seven cents dated June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, and I signed that on June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. And that is all. Next up, we have a gift motion. And I will just move forward, I'll make the motion, um, that we accept the following gifts from Martha, Martha Olver, number nine nine six five six two, to support Crocker Farm at the principal's discretion in the amount of ten dollars, from West Ed Learning Technology, number five three eight seven one four, to support PAL Award, sixth grade participation in math research study in the amount of two hundred dollars, from Wagner Wood, uh, to support five yards of wood chips for Crocker Farm Gardens, estimated value of a hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty cents, from Girls on the Run fundraiser, Varius, to support Wildwood Elementary Band and Orchestra Program in the amount of three hundred and thirty-four dollars, total gifts, uh, of, of cash gifts of five hundred and forty-four dollars. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, second and by, moved by Allison, second by Jennifer. Is there any discussion? Other than sincere gratitude?
Yes.
Um, okay, we will take a roll call vote, um, given a remote attendee. So Ben?
Ben, I.
Irv?
Irv, I.
Allison, I. Jennifer?
Yeah.
Peter, I.
Thank you. Vote passes unanimously, so thank you. And I will move that we adjourn. Is there a second?
Seconds.
Moved by Allison, second by everybody. Um, I think I'll go with Irv, because my left ear heard it first. Um, uh, no discussion, so we will take a roll call vote. Peter?
Uh, Peter, I.
Allison, I. Jen, Jennifer?
Yeah.
Irv?
Irv, I.
Ben?
Ben, I.
And the motion passes unanimously, we are adjourned. Thank you.